7:03 PM, February 23rd. If everyone could say the pledge of allegiance and then a moment of silence afterwards and then we'll have roll call. So pledge of allegiance, Mr. Maine, do you have the flag ready? And there it is. Okay, we've got that. Okay. Shall we begin? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you, and a moment of silence. All right, roll call, Mrs. Crum.
Mr. Curry.
Here.
Mr. Dawson.
Here.
Mrs. Foltz.
Here.
Mrs. Harris.
Here.
Mrs. Oaks.
Here.
Mrs. Phillips.
She's getting on, it keeps spinning, she'll be on, she's on her way.
Mrs. Riley.
Here.
Mrs. Russo. I'm here, thank you. Mr. Shank.
Here.
Dr. Matty.
Here.
Mr. Quatt.
Here.
Mr. Bonner.
Here.
Mr. Latour.
Here.
That's it, thank you. All right, thank you. And tonight, we have a recognition of our vocational agricultural students. Dr. Matty?
Yes, so one of our proud programs at Wilmington is our vocational agricultural programs and it's led by a fantastic teacher in Joanna McKelvey. And Joanna's had a trying year a little bit, but she's doing a great job and she's always up there doing something new when I go by, so it's fascinating. So Joanna, if you want to give us a little bit of a feedback on what the Keystone Awards are, who these wonderful people are with this, would be great.
Well, thank you for the recognition tonight. First of all, happy National FFA Week, for those of you that don't know. It's definitely a little bit different. We're usually running around like crazy and donkey basketball and all kinds of stuff and we're just a little bit more mellow this year. So we may do some things in the spring pending the outcome there. So, but our Keystone degree winners this year, so our farm show was virtual as well as a lot of other things. And so we had eight kids, students that applied for their Keystone degrees. A few of them are on tonight, so Trista and Morgan, Henry, Grace and Nora are all on here. And those are five of our eight. Ryland Sealy and Ryland Sealy and Amber Breeds and then Austin Neely were also our other three. So to get the Keystone degree, there's four degrees total. Green Anne and Chapter are given to the students. They move up, there's also discovery in the middle school, but then they get their Keystone degree. They have to have earned or invested $1,000 or worked in excess of 300 hours in their agricultural experience program, which if you've ever seen it in the scheduling book, you'll see where it says SupAg 1, 2, 3 and 4. That's actually their supervised agricultural experience project that's kept in their AET, which is their agricultural experience tracker. And if you don't know anything about FFA, acronyms are our thing. So, so that's, that's what they do. So their project book that they get credit for, and some of the kids have placement that they've worked, they've worked and earned over, some of them definitely over $1,000. Some of them have worked in excess of $300, whether it's at home or their pets. Some are unpaid hours, some are paid. The projects are endless. They can do foundational, which some of them start with, all the way to some kids own their own business. So it's all over the place. In Pennsylvania, we had about, I think it was 300 students that earned their Keystone degree. So besides the work that they have to do with their project, they have to have, they have to have 25 community service hours. And this is all by October, the end of October of their senior year. So they pretty much have the three years to get it and then they have, so they have to have 25 community service hours. They have a requirement of activities on a local and state level. They have to maintain a good GPA. And so all of that put together, they do their applications and they get submitted to state. So that is basically what they did in October. We were lucky enough that the cutoff was the beginning of November. And so Mrs. Peoples, I don't think is on here, but I really have to hand it out to her. She, she has been a huge asset when it comes to their applications and their records and working with them and just, I wouldn't have been able to do that without her. She has definitely, definitely taken the realm and doing a lot with that. So she is greatly appreciated. So that's how the kids earn the Keystone. We also, at the farm show, Austin and Julie Whiting got a special parent award. Morgan is the fourth child in the Whiting family, sorry. Morgan is the fourth child in the Whiting family to earn their degree. So they got a special parent award. And then we had 13 first-year FFA members receive jackets from the Pennsylvania FFA Alumni Association, which are about $50 apiece. The, we are one of the only states in the, in the country that do this jacket program and it has been very successful. And we have given over, they have given over probably around 1,500 free, I say free FFA jackets, but they're sponsored from people from all over Pennsylvania. So it's a pretty cool program, no other state has matched us yet. And this year, because of COVID, they usually only give around 300, but they gave out over 400 jackets just because the kids have pretty much lost everything this year. So like people just poured in the money to the kids and we were able to get them all their jackets. So because we weren't in school, I left them in the greenhouse and parents would come pick them up and we were able to actually, the kids opened them for Christmas, a lot of them. Santa brought them their FFA jacket. So we were excited that I was able to offer that to them. So, but that was our virtual farm show this year and the kids worked really hard. So, but yeah, that was our farm show experience.
Awesome.
Thank you.
You're very busy, very busy.
Yeah, they are. And real quick, while I have one minute, I just want to let you know that we have 12 graduates working on their American degrees, which is earned or invested over $10,000, 50 community service hours. And so those kids, we're actually getting ready to wrap those up right now. We've submitted, I think, eight out of the 12 to the state level. So we'll know in August on those graduate levels. We have some students attending a virtual leadership conference in April. And then our state competitions this year are virtual, of course. And I'm in charge of the livestock on the state level and we're getting ready to hopefully in May roll those out to the kids, all the public speaking and all of that. Because National FFA has informed us that they are going to do competitions this fall. It's just a matter of how they will look. So we want to, if our kids can qualify on a state level, then we want to give them that opportunity. So that's, the spring is looking a little bit busy, so. But yeah, always crazy, no matter what.
Joanna, you always give us so much information. Go ahead, Carol, Mrs. Harris.
I was just going to say, you know, your endless energy and we're proud of your students and you always represent Wilmington with flying colors, whether there's a pandemic or not. So thank you.
Yeah, I hope to never have a pandemic again during my time teaching. And I hope, I'm sure y'all do too.
I know that you went through that pretty quick. Is there a way that you could summarize that for me? I would like to share that with Senator Rogel.
Yes, I can.
No, that's okay.
He sent some citations to the kids as well. He did, so, but no, I can put that together and that way you guys have it. Newcastle News is supposed to be doing maybe an article, but we haven't finalized that on like all three of the chapters and all the different stuff, but yeah.
Yeah, if they do that, could you let Dr. Matty know? And we could share that with PSBA and the success website portion that they have for all the school districts set up.
Okay.
So yeah, that would be wonderful.
No problem.
Cool.
Mrs. McKelvey, why have you here? I'm going to take advantage of it. Can you explain to the board we have later on about the waiver of the NOCTI? Just explain what that is, since you're the teacher of that?
Yes. So the NOCTI exam, which is the same exam that they give at the Career and Tech Center. So every career and tech center actually received the opportunity to do this waiver. And I don't know what Lawrence County or any of that, but I know Butler County have been in touch with them. And so everyone has lost the face-to-face time. And so because of our hour requirement in the CTE programs, they're giving us an opportunity to take the NOCTI, for them not to take the NOCTI. The agricultural one that we take does not hinder or like help the kids pretty much in the long term of things. And so with that being said, and also we have outsiders from the community that would have to come in and give this test. So that's one of the reasons too. So after talking to a lot of the cohorts from different schools that have ag programs, a lot of us are going to go ahead and opt out of taking the NOCTI. One of my students asked me if they would be still a completer and I said, on paper to the state, no, but in my heart, yes. And you'll still get your graduation court, because I knew that was where that was going.
Yeah.
So like, it's not going to hinder their anything for them. If they were going into, I'll use welding as an example, and they had to pass that and that was like a criteria on their thing, like for the CTEs, then, then it would definitely be. But for the, hey, sorry, so, but for, for our kids, it doesn't, we're good either way.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you.
Always fun.
Thanks, everybody and all the kids on there.
Thank you, thank you for coming into the meeting. You don't have to stay, I know it's sort of weird to say that when you're online, but.
They're online during the day too.
Sure, if you want to.
Well, thank you for the recognition. And I will personally say how excited I am to see the kids back in. It's, it's, it's great, so, but thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Good evening. Okay. And we move to the patrons' public comment session. I will remind you that you have three minutes to speak. We do welcome residents of the district and we commend you for attending the meeting. We also gladly invite your comments and questions. During the initial public participation session at the beginning of the meeting, local residents who would like to address the board will be invited to approach the board. You will be asked to state your name and address and when we are virtual, you have to sign up in the chat room online. And you may speak for up to three minutes. The public participation session is normally limited to about 45 minutes. Prior to adjournment, at the end of the meeting, residents will be offered another opportunity to pose questions on items that might have come up during the meeting itself. These comments will likewise be limited to three minutes. The board may respond immediately to general questions of comments if appropriate, but will often instruct the superintendent or the business manager to do further research and report back to the board and the resident. If you have specific questions, the board will try its best to respond either at the meeting or shortly thereafter. The board wants to ensure that it is fully informed before responding and so if your questions are not addressed immediately, this does not indicate a lack of interest on the board's part. Finally, to protect rights to privacy, the board cannot respond to complaints or comments about specific individuals, employees or students in public session. Mr. Maine, do we have anyone signed up? We do.
Yes, we do.
Robin Popovich.
Hello.
Hello, how are you?
I'm great, thank you. My name is Robin Popovich and I reside at 4393 Hillsville Road, Pulaski, PA. I guess my question will be probably directed towards Dr. Matty since there's only one other administrator here tonight. So my question was, I wanted to know why the Pitt psychology class has been removed from the course curriculum? I see the course curriculum is up for approval tonight. I know it was cut to a half, .5 class. And I know it was a very popular class with Pitt credit, so I was wondering why that has been removed? That's my first question, Dr. Matty, get your pencil up.
I got it ready. I'm always ready.
Yeah, yeah. Number two, I love the addition of the econ class. I think it was a hole in the curriculum. My question is, is it a test class? Because it's only a .5, because I know we could have done a full year micro class or macro class. So just wondering if there's any plan in the future, if this economics class goes well, to extend that into a year-long class or even an AP class? And number three.
I'm ready now.
It's that time of year, scheduling will be upon us. Do you think there'll be any way, let's see, Logan is finally going to be a senior. This will be his fifth year scheduling. Do you think we'll have a schedule before we leave school this year? And that will be the big question. And that is all I have for tonight, thank you.
Couple of things. Scheduling, I think the schedule in a lot of ways will be very similar. So there is a chance that that would happen. That, you know, there's a few changes, but not rapid amounts. AP Pitt Psychology is a good class. We haven't been able to work out a situation where we have a teacher that can teach that class right now in our schedule and have to get approval through Pitt, which we have not done. So that's why that course is not being offered. Econ micro, or econ, I'm sorry, econ is a class that I'm a big proponent of. Kids taking economics for a lot of reasons. And that is a course that if you find interest, it certainly could become a macro or microeconomic course, either a year-long or a AP class. But I would like to see every student take at least a half a credit of econ before they graduate. So that's my answers.
Okay. Thank you.
Good hearing from you, Mrs. Popovich.
Yep.
Jim Hassan.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for a few minutes of time here. Jim Hassan from Mar Road, Robbins' neighbor. So we're making up the Pulaski connection tonight. I wanted to just take a few minutes of time here to, a couple of things, give an update on the Wilmington hockey program. I haven't had an opportunity to, to do that to this group for some time. So I wanted to do that and, and then also give some recognition. So as many know, the Wilmington hockey program has been in existence for three years now. So we've been participating in the Pennsylvania Interscholastic Hockey League for three years now because of the willingness of the Wilmington School District to support us in that and allow us to operate under the sponsorship of the school. We're in our second year of varsity and right now the team is doing very well. We are eight and four. We've got six games remaining and we're poised for a good run into the playoffs. We're only two games out of first place. So given all the challenges that we've had this year, much like all of the other interscholastic sports, we're doing very well, we're very proud of that and very pleased with where we are in the season so far. Like other high school sports, we've had our ups and downs due to COVID-19, as you have been dealing with all year and have seen that. We started our season with some uncertainty. We didn't get started on time with the state imposed restrictions. We were shut down for two weeks, we had a few games changed in our schedule. We were able to reschedule those and pick back up with that. And most recently, we had a situation where a few of our players had a possible exposure. We never really did confirmation on that. But when it did occur, we began immediately following our safety protocol as well as engaging the pill to make sure that we were doing everything in accordance as well as reached out to Dr. Matty and the administration there to navigate this. First, with safety in mind and to make sure that we were doing everything to keep the organization in the best position possible for finalizing our season. So I'm very pleased to say that everything worked out well and that was due in part largely because of Dr. Matty and the administration's support and his willingness to specifically reach out to Pill and on a couple of different occasions, work with them directly to make sure that we were placed back on track and in a good position because we're very concerned we might lose a few games because we're getting to the late point in the season where we're just running out of opportunities to reschedule and continue to move things around. So, Dr. Matty, thank you so much for your continued support, your active engagement and your willingness to support us. Because like I mentioned to you, I don't know, you know, if we weren't aligned with Wilmington, that that would have been the case. So we're extremely grateful, thankful for your willingness to do that and your proactive engagement with Pill to make that happen. Also, I wanted to pass along a thanks and recognition to Anna Dockerty, the school nurse.
I agree with that.
She was tremendous in helping navigate all this. She made a few other phone calls to other school districts, other nurses in the school districts to gather information to make sure that, number one, all of the kids were safe and number two, that we were all doing the right thing. And also she followed up with me personally the Friday after that, when all the dust had settled, just to make sure all the kids were okay. And so that was, that was very nice and we certainly appreciate that. So again, we appreciate the support from the entire administration. We look forward to a long relationship with the school district and growing the organization and the sport of hockey in the area. And again, Dr. Matty, thank you so much and please pass along our thanks to Anna Dockerty as well.
Thanks, Coach, let's go win those games we scheduled and beat all those teams down south, that's what I'm.
That's the plan, that's the plan, thanks.
All right, thanks, Coach.
Thank you very much. Okay, the agenda for the February 23rd, 2021 regular session meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second. Okay. Are there any questions on the agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, next item, approval of the minutes. You've had a week to review all the meeting minutes of the work session on January the 19th and the regular session on January 26th. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Curry. Are there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay. We didn't meet an executive session and I'll go over the PSBA thing at the PSBA point. Board of Operations and Excellence, Board Operations Report. I do not have one this evening. Or the district long and short-term goals. We have not figured out how that we are going to do the strategic planning for the next session and when it's due. Dr. Matty, would you like to comment again on that?
Yeah, we'll, we're, look, Mr. Joel, we're picking dates to start a review in March with everybody, what we've done already and continue that and get through the summer and then get it on the board doc in September and send the PDE. A lot has to do with what they're changing, as you may have heard today. They, the federal government will not waive the test. And one of the big problems with the comprehensive plan is it focuses a lot on testing. So that's one of the negatives, I feel. But we'll work through that and we'll go from there. So you should be getting dates from us soon.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next, I have a PSBA update. Tonight, before the meeting, the board met with our representative, Mr. Jim Somerville, for an informational session on PSBA, which is the Pennsylvania School Boards Association and the opportunities that we have to make the most of our membership with them. And I don't want to review everything that we did go through, but for the public, just so that you know, Jim Somerville services section one and five. One is the northwest corner of the state and that's the part that we are located in. And PSBA also provides research to districts and engagement. They have also available to us coronavirus resources, research data and reports, equity services, policy services, my PSBA discussion forums, online learning content, education and training, government affairs, human resources. And there are some more things. One is called a Year of Learning, so that you can actually take classes at your own pace. And many school directors do take advantage of that. There are upcoming events in March. On the 10th, there's the Essentials of Board Leadership. The 11th is the SBS Monthly Exchange. The 18th, all school directors' monthly exchange. 22nd of March is Virtual Advocacy Day. If you're interested in that, please let me know and we'll get you registered for that. The 24th is the Spring Legal Roundup, that is mostly for attorneys. They will be calling another one for school directors. They do the one for attorneys because that provides school attorneys with continuing legal credit. On the 30th, there's a section meeting for us, that is section meeting number one. They've also released and revamped the Success Starts Here website and that's the one that I've asked Mrs. McKelvey to supply a newspaper article, if she has that together or at least the information, and we can post that. We did also do that a couple of years ago when the students were beginning their computer classes and it had to do with making servers and playing, I think it was Minecraft on those servers, on the servers. It was our SWAT team. They also provide for purchase insurance, energy and crisis communications. They can do a board self-assessment. All right, some of the other things that have happened lately. Just today, they released a new executive director for the, what is called PSBA Charter Change. There's going to be, and still is, a big push for charter school reform and funding reform. And the new director of that initiative is Larry Feinberg from the Havreford School District. And that is being funded by outside funds, not any funds from the PSBA. Let's see what else. There is a virtual section meeting for 2021. They are on March 30, 31 and April 1st. I think I did discuss ours is March 30th. Yes, March 30th, sorry. But it is virtual, it is not in person. So that is my report on our meeting with Mr. Somerville. So now we are moving on to policies. Mr. Dawson?
Yes, we have two policies for update and they are their third and final reading, so we would vote on those this evening. The first one is Policy 103, the second one is Policy 104. Both of them deal with Title IX issues. So, do you want to take? Pardon, separately?
Would you like to make the motion separately? Yes, please.
Okay. I would move that we adopt the revision to Policy Number 103.
Okay. Do I hear a second to that motion?
Second.
Are there any questions on the third reading of the Policy 103 Discrimination Title IX Sexual Harassment Affecting Students? Final read. IX Sexual Harassment Affecting Students Final Read? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes.
The second policy update also final reading for action. So I make a motion that we approve the revisions to Policy Number 104, a Title IX policy.
And a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Shanker. Are there any questions on the final read? 104 Discrimination Title IX Sexual Harassment Affecting Staff? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes.
I think we're planning at some point to have a presentation on Title IX.
Right now.
Right now? Well, there you go. Okay.
Good segue. Thank you.
Oh, well planned.
Let me pull that up. Matt, can I present?
Yeah, I'm not presenting at the moment, so it should work.
Thank you, sir. I'm waiting for.
Is that coming up for everybody right now?
Is it there?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so is it the full screen? I apologize. Is it?
No. Well, it's not online.
One second. Okay, how about that?
That's good.
Okay, so this is just a short, the two policies we had here, it was the whole gamut of Title IX. And only recently have we really talked about Title IX as far as sexual harassment. And a lot of that has been presented because of different things happening and crime committed on college campuses. But historically, it has been Title IX that has had to do with athletics and education. And I just wanted to go over a few brief slides, not long. So this is the Title IX of the Education Amendments Act of 1972. No person in the United States shall, on the basis of sex, be excluded from participation in, benign the benefits of, or be subjected to discrimination under any educational program or activity receiving federal financial assistance. And this particular law, it started out with colleges and private schools and now has entered school districts. And you know that each year we usually post, Debbie does the, Mrs. Crum does this, on the website, we post some of our expenses and different items when it comes to sports for both male, girls and boys. Title IX refers to all areas of an institution, but has been used in athletics. For example, some schools filed lawsuits when females were not permitted to join engineering programs in the 70s. That's just an example. In 1983, I put this on here for everyone's reference, the Supreme Court removed the applicability of Title IX to athletics because Grove City, which is close by, they protested that they did not get any federal money so they wouldn't have to abide by Title IX. That since has changed because, as Mrs. Foltz and her profession knows, students get different grants that tie into federal money. So that changed that. There were also Title IX's applicability was changed in this particular case when plaintiffs were allowed to sue for monetary damages. So when we look at athletics in high school now, which we're, we're a school district, there's a three-pronged test we make to see if we're in compliance with Title IX. And if you're in compliance with one of these, then you are in compliance. So the first one is proportionality. And proportionality basically says that if you have 50% of your population are girls and 50% of your population are boys, you should be close to that number in athletics as well. And if you aren't, should you be adding programs? Now, you often see when they're talking about things is cutting programs. And that often happens at the college level because of the, the introduction obviously of scholarship money. So that's a big factor. Another prong, if you don't follow the proprietary, it's expansion. If a school has a history of having fewer programs for female students but shows that they're working to expand female programs, they may be seen as complying. So you have a softball program, you decided to add on to a junior high program associated with the varsity, or you have a full junior JV schedule, that would be another way to look at that. So you're working toward having female athletics equal to male athletics. And the last is accommodating interests. And what this means is if you, for example, if Lawrence County was a hub of women's or girls' lacrosse and we had 25 girls playing lacrosse and we did surveys and they kept coming back, we want lacrosse, we want lacrosse, we want to start a club team, then that would be one way that you could also show that you're meeting the Title IX guidelines through accommodating the interest of students. One of the most interesting cases when I began my career as an athletic director and they started to look at high schools was when I brought in lawyers and they spoke about Slippery Rock. All of you know Slippery Rock University and their fabulous baseball stadium. And one of the things that they had was they did not have an equal softball field. That led to a $250,000 monetary damages against the school and also the forcing of equal acts and equal sports facilities, along with the lessening of some male sports. I believe there was one of the track and maybe tennis at the time. So I just wanted to give you a quick rundown for everybody, just so you really know that it's not always exactly equal to what everybody thinks it is all the time. In other words, if you have six softballs, you got to have six baseballs and that type of thing. It doesn't mean that exactly. It means equal experience, not just equal items. And that's my presentation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anybody have any questions for Dr. Matty?
Thank God Mr. Bonner doesn't.
Very nice job.
Thank you, sir. I was a little bit nervous with those, with those legal cases and you on the other end. Thank you.
All right. Under Health PDE and the Department of Education, PDE, DOH, DOH should be Communication, Department of Health, right? Waiver from NOCTI.
No, it's Department of Education. She's, she has. Yeah, it should be Department of Health, yes. Mrs. Foltz, anybody can read those because this isn't really a committee. So however you want to do this.
All right. So we need a motion to approve the waiver for the NOCTI exam. Mr. Curry, that's sort of associated with vocational education. Would you like to handle that one?
Oh, sure, I will. Of course, Mrs. Phillips says the.
Oh, that's, I'm sorry. You're right.
Who do you want? Who do you want Mr. Curry to read it?
Either way, how about one does the motion and one does the second?
That sounds good.
I'm fishing it up here. Hold on.
Want me to read it?
Go ahead.
All right, go ahead, Mark.
Okay. Motion to approve the approval of a waiver for the NOCTI exam.
Oh.
And then Mrs. Phillips, would you like to second that?
I'll second it. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions on the waiver of the NOCTI exam? Okay, I don't hear any. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes.
Mrs. Foltz, last week you asked me about the vocation, VOTAC, LCSC and the NOCTI. They are still contemplating. There are a few programs there, as you heard Mrs. McKelvey say, that the NOCTI can be beneficial, but they're still weighing that option. So I just wanted to report back to you on that.
All right. This is an informational item. The Ceding and Operational Strategy for K-12 Through Phase Mitigation. That came out not last Friday, but the Friday before our work session meeting.
And one last comment there, Mrs. Foltz. Sorry. The PDE has not come out with any new standards based on this information. They said they may, as we met with the state last Monday. Just an update, we have first, we have second shots for 1A personnel scheduled for tomorrow, but that has been changed because, as you know, Moderna has been slowed down. The state has kind of rerouted things. So it could come any day, come tomorrow, it could come Thursday, it could come, as long as you get the second shot within, I believe, 41 days is the recommendation. So that's an update. Anything could happen at any time. It's, it's just the way it is. So I wanted just to tell everybody about the vaccine.
Mrs. Foltz, another question. Dr. Matty, it sounds like a good number of the staff and administration have been able to receive the vaccination, at least the first shot. Do you have any idea of, you know, what, what proportion and?
I'd say probably 70%.
Okay. Not everyone would wanted it too. So that would.
Yeah. And then there are some that got it in a different venue, you know, their spouse or whatever. So we're getting right along. But as everyone knows and you see on TV, it certainly seems that that'll be a game changer for all of us. So hopefully we can get as much out as possible.
So pretty much anyone who wants it is, is finding a way to get it.
Only, well, only the 1A. 1B is still difficult, but I did hear today of some 1B people being able to get it. So I think they're really emphasizing getting everybody at least one vaccine. That's the strategy.
Good. Thanks.
Thank you.
And Dr. Matty, the cafeteria workers that you'd mentioned in a, in a brief.
I did. That's a, that's a private.
Can I ask though, did they have their shots?
I know they, well, there are some cafeteria workers, just like bus drivers and just like teachers that have happened. Not everybody. Some have and some haven't. But everybody's only had one, Mrs. Harris. They haven't had two. So that's where we are.
I see. Thank you.
Good question, though.
Hey, any other questions on Health PDE and the DOH? All right, moving on to Budget and Finance. Mr. Shanker?
Okay, there's nothing new here to report with Budget and Finance. Do you have our typical items? And also we do have an informational item J, and we have a word of the cabling bid for K. So you want me to start with the items B through F?
Yeah.
Make a motion to do that.
Good to take those as a group and then we'll move on to the others.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve items B through F.
Do I hear a second on that motion?
Second.
Second, Mr. Curry. Are there any questions on any of the bills? Treasures Report, General Fund Payments, the Food Service Payments, or the Activities Fund? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. The financial report is information, as is credit cards, payments and the payment register. So then we're down to item J, Mr. Shanker. Oh, that's informational too. I'm sorry. Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the attached bid from Computec for cabling services.
Do I hear a second on this motion?
Second.
Second, Mr. Curry. Are there any questions on this motion? Maybe I'd like to reinforce. The district share of this contract is $6,500. This is 40% of the total cost. The other 60% is paid by the federal government through the E-Rate Program. This project will update old cabling with new CAT 6 wire. This will enable the district to upgrade our phone system in the near future. All right, if I hear no questions, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Academic and Curriculum Report, Mrs. Phillips. She has a message that says her microphone cannot be found.
Would you like me to help with the academic report? We did it together, kind of, if you need me to, if she can't get on.
He's saying yes.
She said yes? Yeah, we talked before because I'm going to help with the VOTAC, educational education. We met an academic meeting last night. We talked with the guidance counselors and they presented different information on how they get information out to students and some of the things that they've done with kids online when they're home. And now it's progressing in students being there at school and some of those things. So it was a good discussion. And then also on here, you can see we have the Program of Studies. We are also working on a dorm enrollment with the possibility of one of the universities. So that's another aspect that we'll present to the board once we complete that. But that's the academic report.
Moving on, Field Trips and Fundraisers. I need a motion to approve several fundraisers.
I can do it. Want me to?
Go ahead, sir.
That's fine. Thank you.
Motion to approve the attached fundraisers and field trips.
Do I hear a second on the motion?
Second.
Looks like we're going to be eating strawberries and Pizza Joe's and chocolate. That sounds like a really good combination.
Sounds good to me.
Make that pie. That's all I know.
Strawberries. That has to go to Mrs. Harris for sure.
Well, I said, I agree.
All those in favor of this motion say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Agreement with Sharon Regional Health System. I need a motion for approval.
Motion to approve the attached linkage agreement between the Wilmington Area School District and the Sharon Regional Health Systems Partial Hospitalization Programs, Pathfinders and Kite Strings.
And that was Mrs. Oaks. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mrs. Riley. Dr. Matty, would you like to explain the nature of this agreement?
Yeah, the nature of this agreement is we do this ahead of time in case we have a situation where a student is found in need of hospitalization for different areas. There's Pathfinders and Kite Strings for different ages. And this is usually done by a medical professional such as a psychiatrist or other doctor. And we want to have this in place so we don't have to come back to the board and ask for permission. We get the student in right away. So that's what this is. It's agreement we've had and these are the local programs in this area that we use for those services.
Thank you. Are there any questions on this agreement? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Program of Studies from the high school. Let's see, who hasn't made a motion this evening? Mrs. Russo, would you like to move the Program of Studies? I don't have it pulled up.
Somebody, somebody.
Anyone else want to take that motion? Mrs. Oaks?
I can read it, Lynn.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Motion to approve the attached 2021, 2022 Program of Studies for the high school.
Thank you, and a second?
I'll second.
I think that was Mrs. Harris, beat you to it, Mr. Shanker. Are there any questions on the Program of Studies? We went over this last week. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. The CTC update, is Mrs. Phillips able to connect at some level here?
I was at the CTC meeting because I'm the superintendent of record.
We will take the update from Dr. Matty, thank you.
I'm wearing a lot of hats tonight, it's kind of funny. So LCC TC, three major points, one, they approved a return to school plan. Please remember, as you said, Mrs. Foltz, how large that building is. Two academics in one area and the shop in the shops. They will also continue to, when you go to the cafeteria, you eat with your shop. So they're in different pods, they're trying to eliminate if a couple students get sick that it, you have to, you have to quarantine a bunch of students. So they're doing that as a means to do that, they also approved the contract for support support personnel.
Oh.
And they also, and that's a one-year extension, and they also approved their course catalog, which is, you know, changes a little bit, but relatively the same. So that's the LCC TC report from this week.
Thank you. Moving on, Athletic and Athletic Facilities Report, Mr. Curry.
As most of you know, we have a terrific Assistant Athletic Director, JR McFarland. And JR has been working with kids for a lot of years now and doing a lot of good things for them. Not to mention some pretty great things for the district as well. So I've been talking with JR lately and we had a problem that a lot of schools would like to have. We have too many trophies, we have too many plaques, we have too many awards. So we chatted with JR and under the job descriptions that we wrote up and approved, the Assistant AD was sort of put in charge of that sort of thing. So we shopped around a little bit and we found Mr. Chuba Vas- Vaskel, who is a carpenter, a builder, a designer. And he agreed to put together a giant trophy case right outside the gym. Now, we haven't had much opportunity this year to go there. But he is building a tremendous, large, from floor to ceiling trophy case and donating his time and effort to do that. It will be spectacular when finished. It will allow us to take the two smaller cases that it replaces, put one in the middle school. So they, those kids down there can have their own trophy case and their own trophies. And move the other one to the other side by the trainer's room for coaches and other things, so Mr. Vascale probably will get nothing much out of this, except we proposed a bronze plaque for his work, but he's working on it for a couple of months now. Mark, have you seen it yet? And it's, it's gonna be a tremendously.
I have not seen it yet.
Well, it'll be, it's gonna be a tremendous asset to our district.
It's, it's, it's so, it's a tremendous accomplishment, it's so big, I saw Josh Latour sleeping in it after school, that's how big.
And I had another shelf for you.
Yeah, I mean, it is, it is really spectacular, he's done a tremendous job, we appreciate it.
Cafeteria, when you see it, you'll love it. JR is gonna spend a lot of time putting trophies from one to the other and rearranging them. And I said, enjoy, go do it. And it'll, it'll be great when it's done. So Mr. Vascale has, has donated so much time and workmanship. And interestingly enough, while I have his name on my lips here, his son Connor is participating in the indoor track this year. And again, under the auspices of Mr. McFarland. He is currently rated as the best shot putter in the state at the moment. And number two in the nation.
Wow.
Let me say the nation again, okay? That's it's pretty impressive, I mean, there's a couple of more kids doing this. So Mr. McFarland has on his own also been working with some kids on the indoor track and we have some Lindsay Martineau, Elizabeth Miles, Grace Mason, all expect to have spectacular years coming up. They're starting their case, their their season on March eighth. In other news, um, we have a very good possibility of getting a baseball softball combination scoreboard donated to us. It will be worth around eleven thousand dollars. And I think maybe we can give a positive vote about accepting this gift. So when we know more about it, I'll have more information for you. But hopefully that'll be on track, so we can have it this year. A couple of other things depend on its, its installation, number one, how we get elected to, but that's that's what we leave the engineers for. Um, let's see. I believe that's about all for athletics tonight, we had no particular meetings.
Two hires.
Oh, I'm sorry, from my report, I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry.
We have two retirees or two.
No. Two hires, I said it that way.
Let me get my, I got my tongue tangled up with my IT there, couldn't see what I was saying. And so yeah, go ahead, read the, if I can get Mark to read the motions, please.
Got it. Motion to approve Haley Hall as Assistant Track and Field Coach for the two thousand twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. All clearance and paperwork on file, starting salary will be two thousand five hundred dollars.
A second, Mr. Curry. Are there any questions on this motion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Item C.
Got it, Mark?
I got it, yeah. Motion to approve Hannah Drake as Assistant Track and Field Coach for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. All clearance and paperwork on file, starting salary will be two thousand five hundred dollars.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, are there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, thank you. Buildings, Grounds, and Securities, Mrs. Oaks, anything that you would like to add for a report? And then if you would like to do the motions, have at them.
I do not have anything else to report since I gave it last week, so we'll move along. Um, we're gonna award of the maintenance storage building contracts. The Wilmington Area School District hereby awards the following contracts for the new maintenance storage building. Number one, for general construction, to Lee Michael Industries Incorporated in the amount of two hundred and eighty-eight thousand, six hundred thirty-seven dollars. Number two, for plumbing construction, to Lee Michael Industries Incorporated in the amount of fifteen thousand, nine hundred ninety-five dollars. And number three, for electrical construction, to McCurley Houston Electric Incorporated in the amount of fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars.
Do I hear a second on the motion?
I'll second it.
I'll second.
Harris. Mrs. Harris, how you beat out tonight, Mr. Shanker? Are there any questions on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any, any opposed? Motion passes, item C.
Motion to approve a bid from Mark Gardino in the amount of one thousand fifty-six dollars for the Tate two-five DI tractor with finish mower.
Do I hear?
Second.
Are there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, item D.
Motion to approve a bid from Mark Gardino in the amount of one thousand one hundred and six dollars for the two thousand ten Ford box truck.
Second.
Are there any questions on this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Passes, item E.
Motion to approve a bid from John, from John Sabic in the amount of fifty dollars for the Magnum Run Fit eighty-eight treadmill and fifty dollars for the Magnum elliptical bike and ten dollars for the Magnum elliptical bike.
Second.
And a second from Mrs. Harris. Are there any questions on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes, item F.
Motion to approve a bid from Pat Matzuk in the amount of fifty dollars for the Magnum Run Fit eighty-eight treadmill.
Second.
Mrs. Harris, are there any questions on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, item G.
Motion to approve a bid from Chris Bates in the amount of one dollar for the Hobart dishwasher.
Let's reject.
Oh.
It's not approved.
What it says.
Oh, doesn't it say reject?
Yeah, it says reject.
That's okay. Motion to reject a bid from Chris Bates in the amount of one dollar for the Hobart dishwasher.
Sorry, that's what I see, I don't know.
Second.
I'll submit that motion.
I think this, who's the second?
Mr. Dawson.
Mr. Dawson. Okay. Are there any questions on this motion? Obviously, the bid was too. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Item sixteen Personnel, Mrs. Riley.
I have nothing new to report. We'll be meeting again on March third and we'll have a report after that. We just need to hire our elementary music teacher and we can proceed with that.
Okay, if you would like to say or read the motion then?
Motion to approve the hiring of Katie Gregg as the elementary music teacher for the two thousand twenty-one school year. Her starting salary is fifty-eight thousand seventy-six dollars, which is step seven with a master's plus fifteen credits.
Okay, do I have a second for the motion?
Second.
Mr. Dawson, are there any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, item C.
Motion to approve the attached MOU between the Wilmington Area School District and the Wilmington Area Education Association.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, and just for those who may be new and listening, an MOU is a memorandum of understanding. Are there any questions on this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes.
Excuse me, one moment, Mrs. Riley, you said the meeting is on the third, what is the time?
We didn't.
Okay, we haven't set it yet, good enough.
No, it was just, it was changed, that, that meeting was changed.
Oh, you mean, yeah, that's executive meeting only.
Oh, so we do not have a personnel meeting scheduled this?
No, that's executive personnel, yeah.
That is a personnel, that, that's, that is a personnel meeting, however, correct?
Executive, executive personnel.
Right.
All right, moving on to transportation. We have a request to approve a bus driver. Do I hear a motion for approval? Anybody?
Motion to approve the, motion to approve the attached bus driver list. All paperwork and clearances are on file.
Second.
And a second, are there any questions on this? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we have no new business this evening. And we have a final patrons' public comment session, Mr. Main, do we have anyone signed up for that session?
No, we do not.
We do not, so we're down to administrator comments, which we did take a bunch of those last week. Dr. Matty, is there any other item you would like to mention at this time?
No, nothing at this time, Mrs. Foltz, everybody stay safe.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Curry, and the second from Mr. Dawson. Any questions on the adjournment? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed can stay logged into Board Docs for the rest of the
Mrs. Harris, take it easy.
Motion passed, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, thank you, everybody.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Good night.